Okay, right in time with Mr. Glassbill's clocks. We are going and we are recording. I will display a flag and then over to you, Ms. Wilson.
First, actually, let me start us off by saying it is Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. It is 6:00 PM and this is the regularly scheduled city council meeting. And the first thing that we're going is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to ask our youth, the city councillor, Mari Wilson, to lead us in the pledge tonight. Thank you.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry. Okay.
You know what? It is so much harder than people would think because you say it every day.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I will tell anyone out there in the audience that minds themselves giggling that you, I know that going to Montrose Public Schools, you have said the Pledge of Allegiance every day, the first thing at the high school and the first thing in every class at elementary school and middle school. So you think this isn't, I don't need the words in front of me. I know this until you realize you're on the spot. And then all of a sudden, you just can't quite get it outright. And you will forever be sympathetic to everyone singing the National Anthem or saying the pledge who skips a line. But that's great. We're glad you're here tonight.
Thank you.
And thank you for joining us. I will, I will turn it over. Lisa Del Piccolo to take the role of counsel.
Barbara Bynum?
Present.
Doug Glassbell?
Present.
Roy Anderson?
Present.
Dave Bowman?
Present.
Dave Frank?
Present.
Mari Wilson?
Present.
All city councillors and our youth council representative are present.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem, are there any changes to our agenda, including additions or doations?
No ma'am, there aren't none this evening.
Okay. Then next is our call for public comment for non-agenda items. And I see a lot of people here tonight, so I'm looking at all of our attendees. If you would like to make a public comment that is not for an item on our agenda, you can read on the Zoom function. And that lets us know to unmute you and let you make a public comment. I'm not seeing anyone. But I want to make sure anyone who might be looking for the button and they're not quite sure where to go has a second to find that. One, so I will assume that we do not have anyone wishing to make public comment for non-agenda items. And we'll move on to our consent agenda tonight. Our consent agenda has two pieces to it. Our consideration of minutes from January 5th, 2021, and a consideration of a list of city-owned property for disposal in accordance with the municipal code. I however caught a little typo on our minutes where council recommends people have a carbon dioxide detector. I, we mean a carbon monoxide detector. Small change to our minutes, but, but important. Carbon dioxide would show us we're all breathing and a carbon monoxide would show us we are about to die. So when we have changes to the minutes like that, do we have to pull them out, Mr. Alcorn, and vote on them separate? Or can we just do the consent agenda with the amendment or the, the change to the minutes?
The, the minutes are going to have to be pulled out, voted on separately with an amendment.
Okay. Thank you. So we're going to pull those two items apart. So first, council will consider the minutes of the January 5th, 2021 regular city council meeting. Someone would make a motion with that?
I'll make a motion.
That'd be great.
To approve the January 5th regular city council meeting with corrections as noted.
I'll second it.
Thank you. And now we'll take a voice vote.
Excuse me, Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
I'll abstain due to my absence.
Okay, we have four in favor, motion passes.
Okay. Our next item would be council consideration of a list of city-owned property for disposal in accordance with section 1-16-5 of the municipal code. And we had said at a prior meeting, this could be on our consent agenda because we've been presented with the information. So I think we can just go straight to a motion.
I'll make a motion to consider a list of city-owned property for disposal according to section 1-16-5 in the municipal code as presented.
Second.
And we'll take our vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Next on our agenda tonight is number seven, ordinance 2525 on second reading. This is council consideration of an ordinance for the annexation of the Lynch addition. And I'll ask senior city planner Amy Sharp to present.
Thank you very much. I'll start sharing my screen here for you. All right, this first slide is just an annexation schedule. It shows kind of where we've been in this process, starting with the work session overview, planning commission, zoning hearing. And the hearing tonight is the second reading of the annexation and the zoning ordinance. So this property is located just north of Highway 50. It's also south of Locust Road and just west of 6700 Road. Is approximately 16.84 acres in size, shown on this map in the yellow outline, does it within the city's urban growth boundary, the city of Montrose Water Service Area and the city sewer service area? It is located in the Montrose Water Service Area. However, the nearest water main was located about 1,500 feet away. So the city did enter into agreement to allow the addition to be served by Tri-County Water District until a time when the city water mains are extended into this area. As you can see, more than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to city limits. That's the area that's kind of in this shaded white or gray area, our city limit properties. Site details, so the zoning of the surrounding area is B2. As you can see here, it's B2 on the east and then a little bit of B2 on the south and on the north. So there's a little bit there on the highway that's not. And we'll probably go through with cleaning up that as well and bringing that highway into city limits, kind of like we did on a few other additions last year. As you can see here, this is the intent of the B2 Highway District, Highway Commercial District, to provide for businesses oriented towards servicing the motoring public. This map shows you the official annexation map, which will also be recorded after approval of this annexation. Next, this shows our comprehensive land use map. It shows that this is listed as a major center. So it's in the kind of the dark red area. So this designation includes a wide range of community and regional retail uses such as offices, hotels, and personal and business services. And it also accommodates multifamily housing. So according to our comprehensive plan, this is located within our growth area two. So it's kind of just right on the border there between the growth area one and two, but it is in growth area two, the yellow area, which just means that it's outside city limits, but it does consist of some level of infrastructure or moderate proximity to existing infrastructure. In summary, the area is urbanizing and more than one-sixth is contiguous to city limits. An annexation agreement was required and we did complete that. It'll be recorded with the actual annexation maps after this meeting. An annexation impact report was required and filed with Montrose County. City staff believes that the proposal is consistent with the public health, safety and welfare, our city annexation policies and the comprehensive plan. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the B2 Highway District on this property back on November 18th. And staff is recommending approval tonight of the annexation and the B2 Highway Commercial District. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We have, we have seen this presented. And so this is the, the second reading. So I would assume we don't have a lot of questions. And if the public does, we have all that information beforehand that we've seen at prior meetings. However, we still do, I ask if anyone on council has any questions and then we will, I'll ask if anyone in the public has any questions. I don't see any questions from council. And so let me accept public comment. And if anyone in the public wants to comment on this, they can raise their hand. And Mari, if she has any questions about this?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so I don't see any, so I would consider a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2525 on second reading as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second, so we'll do a vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. So that moves us on to our next item, which is item eight, ordinance 2526, also on second reading. And this is the consideration of ordinance providing for the zoning of the Lynch addition as B2 Highway Commercial District. The information for this was already presented by senior planner Amy Sharp. So I'll go straight to any questions that council or our youth councillor have, while I also look to our attendees to see if there's public comment. Anyone questions, comments? Okay, I don't see any from council or our youth council rep tonight. And I don't see any hands in our attendees list. So we could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2526 on second reading as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, so we'll do a vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman? Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. We can move on now to item number nine, which is the Public Safety Complex Contract Amendment. And this is council consideration of an amendment to the contract with Blythe Group &amp; Co. for additional services of audiovisual design and furniture design, bidding and oversight for the new Public Safety Complex construction project, increasing the total contract amount $830,676. And I will turn it over to Public Works Manager Jim Scheid, who will tell us more about this item that we saw previously in work session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. So as you said, nothing, nothing has changed on this since we discussed today at work session. But I'll give a brief overview to kind of recap some of the points. And yeah, this is to amend an existing contract with Blythe, which is the design team for our police department project. And this would add to their scope, audiovisual design and FFE procurement, which are items that we've been discussing throughout the project and have found that they would be the most cost-effective way to achieve those two goals. So combined, it is a total of $66,478 that would be added to their contract. And then, as you said, the total then would be $830,676 on their total contract. So with that, I would answer any questions you may have. Yeah.
Me? So during the work session, you explained very well that this is not just an afterthought. And I wondered if you could just kind of recap that. So for people who weren't at the work session, they would understand that this is very businesslike and very regular.
No, this is, this is actually something that Blythe included in their original proposal as an alternate. So we didn't necessarily ask for it when we asked for their proposals, but it was something they included as items that they have provided on other projects and something that they have a lot of experience in providing. At that time, we didn't accept the alternates because we wanted to get further into the design to see if some of these items were something we could handle in-house or if maybe would be better for us to hire a different consultant for it. Or we just really wanted to learn more about exactly what they are to see what the best use is of our dollars for the project. And through working with them and really Blythe getting to know us and knowing our operation now and our building, they, they are the best suited for providing this service where if we were to hire somebody else, we'd have to basically train them on what the new design is and how our police department operates. Where Blythe is already at that stage and we will save a lot of time and money in using a consultant that we already have onboard. And a lot of them, we looked at attempting to do them in-house and found that we don't have the connections for like furniture procurement. It is a very specialized field where, you know, they initially may have thought that we may get some pricing advantages, but in fact, we don't. And we don't have the connections that a procurement agent does. So it, it does make sense to use Blythe and their connections for this service.
That's great. Thank you very much.
And as a further.
As a further clarification on that issue, in the work session, you kind of explained that if we had tried to pursue this on our own, we would have ended up spending more than this amount in doing it ourselves. So in effect, we are indeed actually saving money, even though we are adding money to their contract.
That's right. Yeah, these things needed to be done anyway. We need furniture in the building. That, that's unknown. And we've known that from beginning to end, even in our early budget projections, we knew there needed to be furniture. But we didn't know how to procure it. And that's why we investigated through this with Blythe to get to the point where we need to procure it. We're getting close to that now. And so, yeah, we, we could have hired a separate consultant for furniture procurement. But again, in kind of evaluating what exactly that entails, it would mean bringing on another consultant that is not part of our team now. And, and yes, we would have paid that and likely more to them for providing a service that Blythe is already doing.
Great, thank you. Other questions or comments from council or from our youth council representative? And public, oh, yeah.
I have a clarification question. So what do you mean by like audio and visual design?
So that's the, the type of screens and interactive equipment in each type of room. So every room has a very detailed list of what all is included in it. An interview room is very different than a training room. And again, very different than an office. So the type of screen that may be in there or the type of projector that may be in there and how it interacts with the rest of the system. So some blame able to speak to the interview rooms and how specialized those are into the, the police end of it, where a, an office may just need a projector screen. So I don't know, Blaine, if you have anything to add to the uniqueness of an interview room, but that's the technicality part of the AV design.
Yeah, no, we, we have a consultant that's telling us, you know, where, where some of those systems need to be placed. But the AV designer is actually going to go into the type of camera, the, the wiring, all of those things. We want to make sure, as you can imagine, in this day and age, I think here in the last year, there was a scandal that there was a foreign country that had installed software in cameras that were being sold in the United States. And so all of those things are things we have to consider. As you can imagine, we don't want police department cameras to be potentially hacked. And we're building this building to be usable for the next 50 years. And so we really want to make sure that what we are purchasing is going to, is going to last us a while. And that's especially hard when it comes to technology, as you can imagine. That's a good question.
Well, I just want to add, it's really important that we've already purchased the cameras for our police officers. We have to make sure that the cameras and the equipment that we've already purchased will fit with what we're going to buy in the future. That's really a key, that those police cameras work with everything else in the building.
I couldn't agree more.
Thank you guys.
Good points. I did not see anyone public comment raising their hand, which would have been appropriate way to, to say you wanted to comment. And so given that, questions from anyone on city council, we can entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to amend the contract with Blythe Group &amp; Company as presented. Second.
Oh my, we have multiple seconds on that. Lisa can pick whichever of you she wants. And now we'll have a vote.
I picked Mr. Anderson for that second, just for the record.
Thank you for seconding that, Mr. Anderson.
And then Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much for that. And we'll move on to the item, which is item 10. And that's a 2021 vehicle per bid recommendation. And this is council consideration of the bid for the purchase of 22 new Ford vehicles. And I will again turn it over to our public works manager, Jim Scheid.
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. So this item also hasn't changed since work session when we discussed it then. But I'll go over a few highlights and then answer any questions you may have. So we are recommending awarding of these 22 vehicles from Siltahar Motors for a total of $953,450. And I think the one thing maybe I can speak more to is how our local preference was applied to this and how we use that. We use, we use local preference policy, which is actually an ordinance. Ordinance 2221 is what we refer to when we say local preference. And we use this on construction projects, purchases, really anything that could relate a local supplier or vendor to somebody that maybe isn't local. So there's, as is explained in the ordinance, there's a 5% advantage given to a local supplier and a 3% advantage given to a, an adjoining county to Montrose. And just for comparison purposes, so it doesn't actually change their bid, but it allows us to utilize that when comparing the bids. And so we did apply that to this, this bid on the Ford order recently. And, you know, Siltahar Motors was $54,713 cheaper than the local Montrose Ford. And so when applied, the ordinance states that it's 5% up to $50,000 can be applied through the local preference policy. And in this case, it still wasn't the lowest, even with a $50,000 advantage given. For comparison, it wasn't the lowest bid. So that is why we recommended Siltahar Motors. In this case, price was, is the main driving factor. There, there isn't much of an advantage using, where we purchased the vehicle, doesn't matter. We, as far as warranty or recall, we're going to take those vehicles to the same place, no matter where they're purchased. So in this case, the price really is the main driving factor for who we would select. And again, that's why we recommended Siltahar. And I don't know if that answers any questions that have come up, but if not, I'd be happy to answer any other questions on this one.
I, I appreciate that. We also did include that local preference ordinance in the council packet tonight because we had had a couple of questions about it. Just to clarify, when we said local preference, was that something that we just used when we felt like it? And, and the answer is no, it's actually set in city ordinance, which are our city laws. And so we follow a very specific ordinance when we do that local preference.
Yeah, and we do look at it on many, of all projects. I mean, it's something we look at. If they're, if they're all local, then it doesn't apply. If they are, some are local and some are out of Mesa County, then it, then it may apply. Or, you know, so we, we consider it on every, every bid that we review.
And I guess it probably, I mean, I think it's obvious, but I'll say that it's because we would like to spend money in our local businesses and support those local businesses. But on the same hand, it is taxpayer money. And so council in 2009 drew up an ordinance where they put a point at which they felt like the trade-off was worth it, that they were willing to spend more of our taxpayers' money in order to spend that money locally. And they drew that line. And so that's the balance that we are working with. Did I see someone else?
Well, yeah.
Hang on, I wanted to chime in, ask a question.
I just wanted to kind of get a clarification. Maybe this is also obvious, but perhaps our city attorney could comment. I mean, after the biddings close and you evaluate all these, I know this one is kind of close in dollar terms. But if you go back and let someone change their bid, that would be illegal, right? I mean, we, we couldn't do that, I don't think.
That would be begging, that'd be begging for a lawsuit.
Okay, thank you. That's kind of what I assumed, but I, I wanted to hear it from an authority.
Now, our bid openings are very specific for that reason, that the bids are a certain time and a certain way. A lot of them are electronically received. Some of them are physically received. But that's why we follow that process so that, yeah, bids are not allowed to be changed after they're opened.
That's my Frank.
And as a further clarification, this is a budgeted item. It's already in the budget. And some of these are replacement vehicles. Some of these are new vehicles. And that, all of this information is available in the packet.
Yeah, that's correct. They, all, all of these are replacements, except for five of the police interceptors are additional. And all of them are budgeted. The replacements are budgeted in fleet budget and the additionals are budgeted in the police department budget.
Before I go to public comment, I will ask Mari Wilson if she has any comments or questions on this item.
I do have a question. I don't want this to sound super relevant, but I was just wondering, like, how do you guys choose what kind of vehicles you're going to buy? Is that up to you guys or is it like an internal decision?
Um, yeah, well, both. So it's a, it starts out as a direct replacement. So if, if we have a police interceptor that has been performing well for the police department, for example, when it's scheduled for replacement, we'll replace it with exactly that. And in some cases, as a vehicle is being replaced, it's noticed that it could be replaced with something slightly different or upgraded or changed in a way that would benefit the department better. And that's discussed through the budget process and then kind of determines what division may budget for that change. So it's evaluated every year. We're actually, we're evaluating next year's replacement right now. So it's a long process for us to come up with our, our total fleet replacement list. And this is just the portion that actually is a Ford vehicle.
Can I answer your question? Great. Okay. And again, I do see public comment. And before that, any other council comments or questions? Okay, so can someone who is a host or a co-host unmute Mr. Abbott, who has his hand up for a public comment?
Hello, this is Wes. Is this working?
It sure is. We can hear you. Thank you.
Sounds good. I appreciate you taking the time to hear my comment. I very much understand and appreciate the.
Hang on one second. I hate to do this to you. I should have done this ahead of time. So wanted to ask you to introduce yourself for the record with your first and last name and then your address. And that just is how we do this. And I forgot to tell you that. Sorry.
No, no worries. My name is Wesley Abbott. I'm the owner of Montrose Ford Nissan. Business address or home address, Ms. Bynum?
It, it really doesn't matter. We just need one for the record.
Sure. Business address is 100 Merchant Drive, Montrose, Colorado, 81401. All right. First time calling into this, so I apologize. But once again, I, I very much appreciate the bid process. I understand it's in place to look over taxpayer money. I would like to request a reconsideration of sending almost a million dollars of taxpayer money to a large. to a large dealer group on the Eastern Slope. Montrose Ford Nissan has been family-owned and operated since 1986 in Montrose, Colorado. Over the years, we've done a great number of business, much donations to the city. Like many small businesses, we were hit hard by the pandemic. Our overall revenue was 33% down in Q1, 34% down in Q2, year over year, due to coronavirus. Despite this, we didn't lay people off. In fact, we added a couple of people. We didn't want to take our hard-working employees and put them on, on welfare. So, we kept them, we even added. Despite the fact that we were off for the first half of the year, a third, year over year, we continued to donate to the community. I actually sought out the hospital and made a generous donation that is far more than the difference in, in this bid because, once again, we care about the community that we work in. And again, I, I under, I understand that we are looking to take care of taxpayer money. And the local preference does a very nice job of help, helping us out. Although, when you put us against a, a very large conglomerate in a, in a city that wasn't a hit quite like we were, 5% is hard. And I'll point out, we were $4,700 past the local preference. And just so everybody else, else knows, yes, we missed the, the bid by just over $50,000, but we were $150,000 lower than the third-place bid. We weren't bringing up the rear by any means, we were giving it our, our very best shot. So, it's very frustrating as a local business owner who's seen the city do great things to try and help the community and the local businesses through coronavirus, see them send almost a million dollars of our taxpayer money, match of it collected from my dealership, to, like I say, a conglomerate on the Eastern Slope, over $4,700. And, Mr. Scheid, I understa, understand when, when you say, hey, this is price, price, price. That's a little frustrating for a local business owner to hear that it's all about price. It's, it's nothing about the fact that we employ over 45 people. It's nothing about the fact that we donate tens of thousands of dollars a year. It's nothing about the fact that we provide what I hope is extremely good service to you guys. When you bring your cars in, we consistently try and move, move the city to the front of the line in service if that we need to get anything out. And it's very, very frustrating to hear it's only about price because just a couple of years ago, Mr. Scheid, Montrose City submitted a, a bid that was wrong. It was for a two, two-wheel-drive Super Duty Ford truck. In 34 years of business, Montrose Ford has never ordered a two-wheel-drive Super Duty unless it was custom-ordered because we live in four-wheel-drive country. It got here. You guys realized, oh my gosh, we made a mistake. Montrose Ford ordered as, as the bid said. We worked with you, we said, hey, I get it, let's see what we can do. We, we ate that truck, we didn't make, we didn't force the city to buy it. We ate it, and it cost us money, we lost money to get rid of that truck. Because again, this is not the country where you have a two-wheel-drive truck, which I understand why the city didn't, didn't want it. So, when I hear it's all about the lowest price, I'm confused because we've worked, we've worked with the city on miss, miss builds. We've worked with them on bids, we work with them in our service department to provide exemplary service. So, to me, that doesn't seem like it's just, just price. For Siltahar, yes. Siltahar doesn't care anything about Montrose, they don't care anything about our citizens, they don't care about our tax dollars. I, I own and operate Montrose Ford, I own, I know most of my customers. Siltahar doesn't know their customers in Denver, much less Montrose, Colorado. We're just a number on a spreadsheet and a led, and a ledger. And as soon as they deliver these trucks, they can, they forget all about us. Whereas, when we deliver these trucks, we remem, we remember. We know if you really need parts, service, we move you to the front of line. We know people make mistakes and order the wrong truck, and we try and help, help with that. So, that's, it's a little frustrating to hear that it's all about the bottom dollar. And again, I completely understand, I'm a taxpayer, I don't want my tax money wasted. But when it comes, when $4,700 is all that stands between keeping almost a million dollars of our taxpayer money local with a local business versus sending it to a conglomerate out, out of Denver, I'm just a little frustrated that there's no extra consideration given. Especially, Mr. Scheid, you mentioned that this was a budgeted prac, budgeted item. I believe when I was looking through, through there, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this was budgeted for, for far more than my bid came in, is that correct?
So, Mr. Abbott, I think at this point, I, I can understand your frustration, and I think that you heard that council asked some, I think, some good questions of our, of our city attorney. That really, while we can appreciate your frustration, and we want to keep our local money here too, that when we have a law, we need to, to follow it, really, to keep ourselves from costing the city more money when it would come to a, a legal, a legal issue. So, I appreciate you coming and, and sharing your public comments with us. I appreciate the email that you sent. And I mean every word, when I, when I replied to you and told you that I do appreciate everything that your business does for our community. You're known for being a very generous and very supportive business. And it hurts us to send money outside of, of, you know, you'll hear us routinely talking about shopping local and spending local. But when we have a city ordinance, otherwise known as a law, we really have to follow it. And I, I hope you can appreciate that position that it puts us in as well.
Does the ordinance say that you must be the lowest bidder?
Um, the ordinance lays out exactly the, the process that we followed in terms of the, the local preference and how that works, yeah. So, anyway, I think I'm going to, at this point, I'm going to ask if there's any additional public comment. And I don't see any, but I want to make sure I'm not missing anyone, okay? Are there any additional? Well, I suppose I'll do a motion in a second, and then I'll ask if there's additional questions or comments. So, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to award the purchase of 22 new Ford vehicles to Siltahar Motors of Broomfield, Colorado for the total purchase price of $953,450.
Have a second. Thomas Anderson, thank, thank you. Um, any further discussion?
Yes, I'm, I'm wondering if we could have the exact ordinance read into tonight's record so everybody understands exactly what that says? I would think our lawyer could pull that up.
Uh, it's in our packet. It's one of the reasons that we included in our packet tonight is so that everyone would be able to see the ordinance. Do you, you want me to read it?
Please.
Okay. Um, it's ordinance, and I understand my microphone, unless I talk right towards my laptop, it's hard to hear. So, is this okay? You guys can hear? Okay, it's ordinance 2221, an ordinance amending section 116-4B of the Official Municipal Code of the City of Montrose for the purpose of providing for a local preference in the purchasing regulations. Council believes that there should be a local preference for supplies and services as long as they are not of inferior quality to those offered by competitors outside of the local area, and it can be accomplished with no cost to the taxpayers. And whereas, the city council has determined that the amendments herein will be consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, now therefore be ordained by the city council of the City of Montrose, Colorado as follows. Section 1, 1-16-4B of the Official Code of the City of Montrose is hereby amended in its entirety to read as follows. General Purchasing Regulations. When procuring in an amount exceeding $10,000, the city local businesses with an advantage in the bidding process so that funds contracts will be spent by the employees of local businesses in the local economy. To accomplish this goal, local businesses shall mean a business situated or based either in Montrose County or in one of the surrounding Colorado counties, depending on the applicable subsection that employs adequate local residents to perform the bulk of the work anticipated under the contract. This section shall not apply to contracts with funding sources that prohibit the consideration of local preference. If such procurement is not for supplies or services of inferior quality to those offered by competitors outside and can be accomplished without significant additional cost to the taxpayers, primarily preference may be given in the procurement of supplies and services produced, manufactured, sold, distributed, or grown in Montrose County, and in the procurement of services and construction contracts to bidders as follows. Section 1. If all other evaluation criteria set forth herein or in the invitation for bids or requests for proposals are equal, said primary preference may be given to local businesses situated inside Montrose County. And, section 2. For any procurement, the primary preference given pursuant to this subsection shall be in an amount not to exceed 5% of the total price, and in no case more than $50,000. Next. If such procurement is not for supplies or services of inferior quality to those offered by competitors outside of the Colorado counties abutting in Montrose County and can be accomplished without significant additional cost to the taxpayer, secondary preference may be given by the city in procurement of supplies and services produced, manufactured, sold, distributed, or grown in Colorado counties abutting in Montrose County, and in the procurement of services and construction contracts to bidders as follows. If all other evaluation criteria set forth herein or in the invitation for bids or requests for proposals are equal, said secondary preference may be given to local businesses situated in the Colorado counties abutting in Montrose County. Next. For any procurement, the secondary preference given pursuant to this subsection 2 shall be in an amount not to exceed 3% of the total price, and in no case more than $50,000. Next. Joint ventures partnerships wishing to qualify for either local preference must be able to prove to the city's satisfaction that the local business's joint venture or partner shall perform and be paid for no less than 51% of the work. And then, the next section is invalid, and validity and severance? Two. If any provision of this ordinance or the application of it to any person or circumstance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such invalidity shall not affect other provisions or applications of this ordinance, which can be given effect without the invalid provisions or applications. The provisions of this ordinance are expressly declared to be severable. Section 3. Provisions not amended to remain in effect except as specifically amended hereby the Official Code of the City of Montrose and various secondary codes adopted by reference therein shall continue in full force and effect. Section 4. Authority to adopt. The city council hereby finds, determines, and declares that it has the power to adopt this ordinance pursuant to the authority granted to home rural municipalities by Article 20 of the Colorado Constitution, and the powers contained in the City of Montrose Charter. Section 5. Effective date. This adoption of the previous contained, provisions contained in this ordinance shall be effective as of June 1st, 2009. Introduced, read, and passed on this first reading on the 16th of April, 2009, by Mayor Jose-
Thank you.
Then our packet would have worked. Okay, so that's the law that we are following. And it is always a good idea to follow your laws, and that's the advice our city attorney gave us. Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, I believe we have a motion and a... Hang on, let me just double-check. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. And with no further discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Barbara Bynum? Aye. Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Now, I gotta pull my agenda back to page 1, one second. Okay, so, that was item, that was item 10. And so, that allows us to move on to item 11, which is staff, the first staff report is our sales use and excise tax report by our finance director, Shani Wittenberg.
Thank you, Mayor Bynum and City Council. So, tonight's report is November compared to November of 2019, and I will share my screen so you can follow along, I think. All right, so, I'm assuming you all can see that? So, we're almost through the year of 2020, as far as sales use and excise taxes is concerned. The general fund sales and use tax percentage is 3%, has been that way since the late 80s. In November, compared to November of 2019, our retail sales tax is up 10.8%. Construction use tax up 50.2%. Use and auto use tax is down 2.2% with total collections up 10.8% and a positive budget variance of 13.5%. Year-to-date compared to year-to-date in 2019, our retail sales tax is up 7% or approximately $1 million. Construction use tax is up 35.3% or $151,000. Use and auto use tax is down 5.9% or $71,000. And I might make a note there that it's mainly the use tax, not the auto use tax. Auto use tax has actually come in fairly well over the last year, several months. Total collections is up 6.8% or $1.1 million and a positive budget variance of 9.1% or about a million and a half dollars. The public safety sales and use tax adds 0.58% to our 3% and it was passed by the voters on November 5th of 2019. The November collections is $300,620. For year-to-date, our budget variance is a positive 9.9% or $309,000. More has been collected in public safety than we budgeted, we budgeted conservatively. The Montrose Recreation District, the voters also approved a 0.3% to help fund their new community recreation center. So, that adds another 0.3% to our 3%. Our 2020 compared to 2019, in November, we collected $155,495 or 11% more than we did in November of 2019. Year-to-date, we've collected $1,772,997 or 6.7% more than we did in 2019. Excise taxes are added as well to the 3%. Hotel excise tax adds 0.9%, our restaurant excise tax adds 0.8%. Unfortunately, the next two slides are pretty red. Hotel excise tax is down 3.8%, restaurant excise tax is down 4% with total collections down 3.9% for November compared to November of 2019 and a negative budget variance of 0.4%. Year-to-date collections for hotel excise tax is down 17.9% or about $20,000. Restaurant excise tax is down 2.2% or about $9,000 with total excise tax down 5.4% or $29,000 and a negative budget variance of 2.2% or approximately $12,000. Retail sales enhancement, this is the money that the vendors have given up to use for the city to promote sales in Montrose. And in November, compared to November 2019, collected $37,068 or 30.7% more. Year-to-date collections of $415,461 or 25% more. As I've been saying all year, that's a lot to do with the fact that we added 0.58% to our sales tax. And with that, I will entertain any questions you all may have, or comments. Then I'll quit showing my screen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from council? I don't see any, okay. And so, next on our agenda for staff reports, that was our only one on the agenda, but I'll ask our staff if anyone else, a department head, a manager, has anything they need to tell council about? Any of them, okay. Mari, do you want to give us an update on you, city council, and what your service project is for the month?
Yeah, so, this month, we're working on the food drive with our local food bank. And we actually set up five locations. And we have, we're getting stuff in all of them, and we're going to be collecting them soon. And then, we're also going to reach out to Habitat for Humanity to see if they can- And we have, we're getting stuff in all of them and we're going to be collecting them soon. And then we're also going to reach out to Habitat for Humanity to see if they can come talk to us about homelessness in our community and what we can do to help.
That's great. Do you have those five drop-off locations handy that you can tell us or where we can find that information?
Give me just a second. I'll get it for you.
Okay. I saw it on social media, but not everyone is on the social media. So if you can pull it up, we'll give you a chance to tell our public where they can drop off food if they want to help with the youth council's food drive. Your audio is still working. We're just, we're just pausing for a second. And while we're pausing all that council, I'm gonna come to you next for comments. So you can start thinking about what you might want to comment about tonight.
Okay, so I know we have one at the high school. We also have one at, I'm sorry, the list that I have is like all out of order. But we do have them at City Market. Let me see if I can find the full list. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I think there's a couple of churches in town and, and I think folks can find that information on social media and/or the city's website. So I think that's great. You guys are doing a food drive this month.
And also we have it posted on our Montrose City Youth Council page. I just don't have the login.
Good, good enough. Thank you. Any questions for Mari about council? Great. Thank you. I know you guys have been working really hard and I know it's hard when school is hybrid and social distancing and all of that. So I, my hats off to you guys for still really making youth council productive and adding value to our community. Okay, council comments is next on our agenda. Are there any comments from my fellow counselors tonight? Anything on your mind? We met this morning. We had a full two-hour work session. And that, that is always recorded and available on the city's website for anyone who wants to watch that work session as are all of our council meetings. And it looks to me like if there's no additional comments from my fellow counselors, I saw a lot of shaking of heads, that I could entertain a motion to adjourn tonight.